Good afternoon. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, if you'd please rise for the pledges and our word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, deliberate, just, and justice for all.
Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If you'd please remain standing, we have Nick Henderson here with us tonight from River Valley Christian Outreach. Thank you, Gabe, for coming out and being part of our meetings.
All right, let's pray. By the way, just come before you, and I just thank you for being such an awesome God. Thank you for being wondrous and miraculous and a love that is so amazing that you sent your son to die on the cross for us to take our punishment and our shame and to offer mercy and grace as our Lord and Savior. And I just pray for BISD today. I first pray for the administration. I pray for all those that work in the offices, all those that even work behind the scenes doing things that many of us may not know how it gets done. I pray for them as they work this summer and they prepare for this next year that you give them the resources and the wisdom to get everything planned. And I pray that you also give them times of rest and give them the time with their family and with their friends this summer. And Lord, I pray for all the teachers and all those that work in the school with the children and their time off. I pray that you give them plenty of rest and re-energize their hearts and their minds and their time with their family and give them that joy in the moments of this summer, Lord. And as they prepare to go back at the end of summer, I pray that you give them the energy and the resources and the planning that they need to begin the job in the new school year. And Lord, today I want to pray for Chief Bunch. I want to thank you for bringing him here. I want to pray and lift him up and ask that you help him get settled well in the Bastrop area. And I pray as he works his new position here and I pray that you give him wisdom. I pray that you give him discernment and all the resources that he needs to do this job and to get ready for next year, Lord. And I thank you so much for all of BISD and I pray you continue to bless us and I pray that we give you honor and praise in all that we do. And I pray this in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Edwards, we have some introductions and also introduce our student speaker as well.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I did want to start and deviate from just for one second and thank Nick so much for that opening prayer. And I'm going to, before you sit down, Chief Bunch of you stand up. I'd just like to welcome him. I would like you all to see his face and welcome him to Bastrop. We're so proud of having him. He brings a wealth of experience, 25 years in the police force, worked with resource officers, and he has a very unique experience as he's also served as a principal. So we think it's a perfect marriage of skill sets to lead our police department here in Bastrop. So again, thank you for choosing us. We welcome you to Bastrop.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, where's Cade? It's my pleasure, come on up, Cade, to introduce our student speaker for the Character Education Trace for June, which is honor. Cade Edwards is a senior at Cedar Creek High School, will speak this evening about honor. Cade is involved in the Cedar Creek High School National Honor Society, is in the top 10% of his class, is a member of student council. He serves as an active member of the City of Bastrop Youth Advisory Council, and that's a committee that's focused on boosting youth involvement in government and the community. Cade is also a delegate for Texas Boys State 2019. In addition to serving his school and community, Cade excels in football, powerlifting, track, Cedar Creek High School, at Cedar Creek High School. He has participated all three years of high school and actually awaits the 2019 season. His parents are John and Mandy Edwards. We'd ask him to stand, but guess what? They're at work. That's what Cade says. So, Cade.
Hey, Cade, pull that microphone stand up. You're tall.
Okay. Hello, my name is Cade Edwards and I'm here to talk to you all about honor today. As a student athlete, NHS member, and now as a voter in America, I say honor is a necessity to young American students and people in today's society. In today's world, there are infinite distractions to our youth that drive them away from the right path. What keeps the youth and students in America toward this righteous path is honor. Honor is what keeps people together and strive for greatness. Honor is doing something right even when no one is watching or even if people say it's wrong, when you know it's right. Honor is what builds great character, especially at younger ages. At a young age, you have honor for your parents, your friends, your school, your classmates, and even your teachers. Honor gives the youth and the people a foundation for success, which every great person that has lived have had. All great men and women in America are in the history books had honor for something they most likely had when they were younger. They use their honor to strive and be great. For me, my honor is in my family and in my community. I honor my family by showing respect to them and having unlimited power, unlimited support, unlimited support till the day I have no more days. I honor my community by helping them even when, and staying loyal to the people involved within the community. Especially in a time of need, I go to help because that is the right thing to do. Honor is what keeps communities and organizations great. As General MacArthur wrote, "Duty, honor, country." Those three words reverently dictate what you ought to be, what you can be, what you will be. They are your rallying point to build courage when courage seems to fail, to regain faith when faith is lost, to create hope when hope becomes forlorn. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cade. We appreciate it. Tell your mom and dad we said hi. And at this time, we'll move into our special recognitions. We're going to recognize the Community Partner of the Year, Dr. Kristy Lee.
Well, this is such, this is one of my favorite board meetings because it gives us an opportunity to publicly say thank you to our community partners, to businesses, small and large, in our community. And we really, really could not do what we do without the people who are behind me and so many who are not able to be here tonight. So, we're going to recognize some community partners, and I didn't see her to begin with, but Annette Harrison, Bastrop High School. Claire?
Right here.
Okay, well, Annette's not here, but you are. Please welcome Claire Shelton from Cedar Creek High School. She teaches. And board members, I'm going to ask you to come out from your seats and stand up here because you're going to be in every picture that we take. Claire is a health science technology education teacher and Nurse Rios wanted to recognize her and Ms. Harrison from Bastrop High School for being so instrumental in helping all of our kiddos at the elementary schools get screened. So she is one of our community partners this year. So you guys want to, Claire, I'm going to ask you to get in front and center. You guys kind of be warm and friendly around her.
Are you even?
So we're going to take one picture, all of you partners, we're going to take one picture up here and then you're going to go out this door and then there'll be a photographer out there that will take another picture of you. Without the board members, not that they don't look great, but. Okay, good job. Thank you so much, Ms. Shelton. And now if I could have the LaGrange Bluebonnet Lions Club. And again, they were nominated by Nurse Rios for all of their assistance with our children at the elementary school for vision and hearing screenings.
We got a little thank you for looking outside of Fayette County, coming out here and helping us. We've got one more.
One more? Oh. Okay, here we go. Excellent, thank you, thank you ladies. Erin, click. No, Premier. Okay, Physicians Premier is not with us tonight, but they are, have been an amazing partner for us in all of the athletic physicals, providing those at no cost to all of our student athletes. They're producing car tags for all of our, I mean backpack tags for all of our elementary school students so that they can, teachers know safely if they're a car rider, a bus rider, going to day camp, going to sports camp after school. So they've been a great partner, so I want to give them a round of applause as well. And you don't want, you want me to click it because that's my job up here. And finally, I would like to recognize our district-wide Community Partner of the Year, the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce and We Believe in BISD, Becky Wong. And we have some We Believe team members with us. We definitely, we definitely wouldn't feel as loved without the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce and We Believe in BISD. They are amazing partners for us and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Oh, is there more? Oh, there's one more? Sorry. Ready? Okay. Okay, here you go. Fantastic. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. Becky, you're going to go out this way for the other photo. Okay, we're going to go in alphabetical order, except not right here at the beginning because some of our, the honorees tonight have to be at a city council meeting because they have other duties in this community. So at this time, I would like to invite Drusilla Rogers, one of our council members, but she owns the Sugar Shack, and she's one of our honorees this evening. And the next, I would like to invite our Chief of Police, James Altgeld, because the Bastrop Police Department, we certainly couldn't do it without them as one of our primary law enforcement partners in keeping our kiddos safe. And next, I would like to invite our city manager to join us, Linda Umlbel. So I made a promise that I wouldn't ever tell anyone what Ms. Umlbel had done for us, and I'm going to keep true to my word, but trust me, it was really, really awesome. And it made a difference in a lot of kids' lives. She values BISD, she values kids, and she loves this community, so thank you very much. And finally, the city council isn't going to have their meeting tonight without our wonderful mayor, Ms. Connie Schrader. This lady is everywhere, does everything. She goes and talks to our students, she finds them, helps find internships, she connects them with people, but mainly she just, again, she loves our community and she loves Bastrop Thank you very much. Okay, now we can start alphabetically. I told Roy and Eric with A+ that one of the benefits of being an employee of A+ Federal Credit Union is that when you got recognized, you always got to go first. So with that being said, please welcome A+ Federal Credit Union, one of our wonderful business partners. All right, great job. Thank you so much. Okay, just checking. Tricia? There she is. The Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry, Tricia Silva. Certainly with our Nibbles Backpack Project, helping to make sure that our food insecure kiddos get what they need on Fridays and on other days and all throughout the year. We appreciate that partnership so much. Okay. Yes, ma'am, thank you. And if I could have our team from Bluebonnet Trails Community Services come up. We've had a long partnership with Bluebonnet Trails and it's only going to be continuing this next year through our health clinic services. That's okay, Chris. Okay, ready? Okay, good deal. Thank you all so much. Okay, is Patty here with Cap City Kids? There she is. Cap City Kids, gosh, they're partners with us for the winter blast, right, in helping provide coats and toys for our children. Here we go. Thank you so much, Patty, for being here. Larry? Larry, man? No, no Larry. Well, he's already standing up there, but we'd like to thank Mr. Dillon for what he does for our school system. He's a business owner in town and participates in the Bastrop Education Foundation and all kinds of things. So we would like to recognize Mr. Dillon. You want to get front and center? Between those two troublemakers there. Okay, here we go. Thank you very much. Amber Lee with Classic Bank. Come on up, Amber Lee. Classic Bank is one of our, they're a BASH sponsor, which is just coming up here in Lori feels like Vanna White, she's just going from side to side. Okay, thank you very much, Classic Bank. Mary Ann Green? No. Okay. I didn't see JR either. No. Okay. At this time, I'd like to invite Derek Hay with Gold Star Transit. They are longtime partners and supporters of our Back to School BASH, the Bastrop Education Foundation, and many other things. Right, and as Ms. Callahan said, and they get all our children to school. And to the right home, and to the right home, that's right. Okay, good deal. Thank you so much, Derek. And Lone Star Circle of Care is also a BASH sponsor for us. Lindsay Tippett is here, she's the Chief Operations Officer. And Julie Rhone, the clinic manager. Okay, good deal. Thanks so much to Lone Star Circle of Care. And you guys will go off that dress as one of the pictures. And this lovely lady was up with us before, but she's now representing her own business, Ms. Janice Pennick with Remax. She is a longtime We Believe in BISD sponsor. Ready? Okay. Okay, good deal. Thank you so much, Janice. And also from Remax is Ms. Zia Lowe. Another We Believe in BISD partner. Great, thank you, Zia. Is Mr. Wamboldt in the house?
He is.
He is, okay. Roscoe State Bank is also We Believe in BISD partner, and Corserick himself serves as the president of the Bastrop Education Foundation, and Roscoe's a wonderful partner for us. Boy, if I'd been quicker with my camera. Okay, ready? Okay, and another person who's already standing up on the stage is Dr. Matthew Mixx with Adjust Chiropractic, and they are obviously a key partner, Bastrop Education Foundation, and so many other things. All right, thank you so much. Stan Berry and Associates is a longtime partner for BISD, not only as We Believe in BISD, but Wanda will often solicit articles to be included in their newsletter that promote BISD, and that's always nice. Okay, great, thank you so much, Stan Berry. State Farm Insurance, Mr. James Allen, one of our board members, and Marissa. State Farm is a longtime partner of ours, We Believe in BISD, the Bastrop Education Foundation, and so much more. We're very appreciative. You want to stand beside her? Ready? I can see you, Molly. Walmart is one of our BASH sponsors. They've also allowed us to place a bus in front of their facility from time to time, not only promoting, is it just promoting the Back to School BASH or bus drivers too? Because we do need bus drivers, Roberto. Thank you very much for what you do. And Ms. Tracy Lovelace is here with the Nietzsche Group, a longtime We Believe in BISD partner. And of course, Mr. Ashley Mucci. You guys, move over a little bit to the center. Poor Molly. Okay, ready? Awesome. Thank you very much to the Nietzsche Group. And is Mark, is Mark, there's Mark. I saw your wife and I just totally skipped over you, I'm so sorry. Strategic Capital is one of our wonderful partners, and we have with us Mark Caldwell Not only are they so supportive of We Believe in BISD, We Believe in BISD, but also they're new sponsors of the, can I announce this? Okay, of the Crosstown Showdown Tailgate, which will be coming to Memorial Stadium October the 4th on Friday night. So we appreciate Mark and his partnership. Thank you very much. Did I miss any community partner, business partner who's with us tonight that I didn't check off my list? Okay, there are so many people, of course, that we could have recognized in this community, as I said before, and I truly am grateful because what it means is that children and teachers and staff and our schools get exactly what they need. So on behalf of all of those who couldn't be with us, we want to give them a hearty round of applause.
And Ms. Wamboldt, would you please pass on to the chamber floor? We appreciate y'all allowing this committee to be part of the chamber and for support for the district, and it really means a lot, and I think it's been very, very beneficial. Thank you.
All right, at this time, it looks like we're going to move to our district spotlight, Stuff the Bus, Lori.
We're excited about the Back to School BASH and Stuff the Bus this year. It's going to be Saturday, July 27th, out at Memorial Stadium. It's our annual event that kicks off the school year. We're working on getting 1,600 backpacks. We're working on getting 1,600 backpacks filled with school supplies. Already have the backpacks in, just waiting on the school supplies to get in. On the sheet, it shows a bunch of our sponsors are ready. A lot are repeat businesses that come back year after year, thankfully, and help us put it together with their donations. It's really exciting this year. We're going to have a circus theme. We have that carnival theme. We have that designed. Our t-shirts are in the process of getting ready. Invite y'all all out to help hand out backpacks.
So Lori, how many backpacks did we hand out last year? It's been growing each year, hasn't it?
Last year was 1,600 also.
16 as well. You know, it's an amazing event. They start lining up at what time in the morning?
I get out there about 5:00 a.m., and we usually have cars already out on 21 waiting.
And you can definitely tell by the individuals in line that it's fulfilling the need. And it's really amazing. And definitely want to thank all the sponsors here. It means a lot.
We'll also have the... We're bringing back the Administrator Competition that First National Bank is sponsoring. And we have some really exciting activities. It'll be exciting for the rest of us that watch them.
CCM's calling everybody out? Is that what I'm seeing back there?
Yeah, they were our winner last year.
And Central's going to participate in this, like the push-up contest and things like that? Jump rope?
We're banned.
Color banned.
Lori, when do you stuff the bags? Actually, stuff them?
Mid-July. We'll start...
This is your opportunity to ask for volunteers. Just take...
If there's any businesses, volunteers. Student groups that want to help us stuff. We usually... It used to take us a long time. Now, we knock it out in about a week, because we have so many volunteers that come in. So, football team's going to help us load backpacks this year, so...
Fantastic.
It's an amazing event. Thank you for taking us on and helping out every year and for everything you do as well.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Bariantos, did anybody sign up for open forum? Nobody signed up for open forum. We will move to our public hearing of the 2019-20 budget.
All right. Welcome everyone to the public hearing for the 2019-20 Bastrop ISD Budget. It's been a long season. It's been a good season in that we're very pleased that the legislature infused some money into districts. And of course, we should... Would be remiss not to thank our legislators for doing that. It's just something we've been waiting for, for a long time. What I would say to preface the whole hearing is it's still... The bill was signed, so that was great news. There's still some things we don't know. We'll see a little bit of that in the budget hearing. Also, it's very possible this year, because of the changes and the things we don't know, we will be doing budget amendments. We do those throughout the year. But they did say we could have different budget amendments or more budget amendments this year just for, as we learn new things and new things that need to be implemented, we will need to, you know, add those to the budget possibly. So, that'll be an ongoing thing. So, probably more than you're used to, but it should be a great year. Again, we had a budget here, I wanted to say last week, a budget workshop, sorry, with our board. And that document will be available on the website if it's not already. It's a pretty extensive PowerPoint. This one isn't quite as long tonight. But just so you'll know that, there's every month that we have the document. It goes out. And the other thing to say is, a budget is not put together just by me by any means. It's a team. Mr. Edwards, our administrative team, our principals, our departments, everybody. It's a joint effort for everyone. So, it's a lot of work, but we have a lot of fun doing it. Our priority goals, of course, again, for 1920, safety and security is always at the top of our list, academic achievement, and relationship building. To go over just a few of the school finance highlights, because it is a lot of information. And again, there's some things that are unknown. When we do know those things, we'll bring those back as a financial report, I think, each month. The basic allotment increase was probably the biggest thing about the school finance bill, along with the compensation package. So, the basic allotment is... It was a pretty large increase. And so, what that does is that just infuses more money into the district per pupil. So, we get money based on how many students come to school. So, by raising that amount to 6,160 per ADA, that makes us have quite a lot more money.
That's not WADA, that's...
It's not WADA. That's just ADA, yes.
And those monies are designated for...
The basic allotment.
Right.
It's really... The basic allotment is part of the whole program. And then, there's other allotments underneath.
Right.
But a lot of the allotments that you'll see that we'll talk about are based on that basic allotment number. For instance, our Career and Technical Education. You get money above the basic allotment for that, but you get a percentage of that basic allotment. So, when that basic allotment's higher, then your allotment's higher.
Right. And I bring this up for the public's use, that these monies are for our day-to-day operations to run the school.
That's right.
They're not for paying off debt.
That's right.
They're not for expanding our campuses and fixing things that are breaking down there.
That's right. We will be approving the debt service budget later on, but it's a separate item. But in the school finance bill, the programs that benefited from the basic allotment increase, which I spoke about, was the regular allotment. So, that's basically everything that's... For just every student that goes to school, that comes to school. You go to class, you sit in your classroom, we get money for you. So, that's why attendance is so important, because it's based on, not your enrollment, but actually, the number of kids that come to school. The Career and Technical Education, and also bilingual education, benefited from this basic allotment increase. New allotments in the House bill this year are... And this is really exciting. Dyslexia, the Early Education allotment, fast growth, which is for districts that are in the top quarter quartile for growth. And Bastrop ISD is in that, so we're very pleased about that. That gives us about $2.4 million just in that allotment alone. There's a dropout recovery. There's still more information to be known about that. The Teacher Incentive and Mentor/Teacher allotment, still some things to be known. School Safety is an allotment, about $9 per student. And then, the CCMR Outcomes allotment. And that has not been determined as far as the amount of that yet necessarily, but we'll have more information on that and how we are to expand it. There were a couple of allotments that were repealed in House Bill III, the Gifted and Talented allotment and the High School allotment. The Gifted and Talented does not mean that you don't have to have the Gifted and Talented program. You still have to show you're doing that. They haven't really told us how we're going to do it. I'm sure through reporting to show we're still serving those students in that same capacity. And the High School allotment, same thing went away. But I think what they're thinking was, with the increase in the basic allotment, that will take the place. And you'll have that money to continue those programs. State Compensatory Education and Transportation changed in that how they're funding. The state comp ed is for students who are at risk and students that are educationally disadvantaged. And so, that money is used for supplemental resources, like not your regular teacher in the classroom. It's for anything above that. The way they're going to fund that this year is based on census groups. And we're still looking for... They still have... They've given us some information, but TEA will actually identify every student and what census group they're in. So, you will get different allotments and different weights depending on where those students live. And then, the Transportation allotment is also changed in that it will be based on the mile... For every mile, you'll get... Right now, it's showing a dollar. Before, it was a linear density. So, it's based on the number of students and how long they rode. So, for the Bastrop, that's... As you can imagine, we drive a lot of miles with the number of square miles we have. So, that's definitely an increase in the allotment for us as well. Full Day Pre-K, as you've heard, that's mandated now. There is some information as far as you'll be able to apply for waivers if you're not able to. But what it is, is that it's still for eligible students to offer free day... To offer Full Day Pre-K. Now, this Early Education allotment that we talked about earlier, that's how this is going to be funded, because you'll still only receive funding for the Half-Day Pre-K, but the Early Education allotment will be used to fund the rest of that. Bastrop ISD, our plan right now is to implement Full Day Pre-K at two of our elementaries, Red Rock Elementary and Lost Pines Elementary. And then, next year, we plan to implement it in all six schools. So, it's going to be a process we're going to be working through over the next few months and all through the next year to get that started for next year. Districts, again, can ask for waivers if you don't have space. The Compensation Package. It was good that, of course, there was money infused into education for raises. And it didn't come out to where it was a flat increase for every person, but they did give us boundaries as far as how much we had to use and how much we... How much had to be used for compensation. So, 30% in the gain of your ADA increases had to go to full-time employees that were not administrative. And so... And I have a little calculation on the next slide. And 75% of that 30% had to be used for classroom teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses. And the other 25% for all other categories. They also differentiated compensation for classroom teachers with five or more years of experience. The way that was calculated, for us, that gain, because you took the prior year against the current year ADA gain for your Foundation School Program. And that, for us, was $5.6 million. So, 30% of that, we had used on salaries for staff other than administrators. So, for Bastrop ISD, that would have been one... That's 1.6 million. What I would say also is that we still are... It's unclear how much money we're going to get altogether, because there are some allotments that have not been decided. They're still working on the templates, as you hear me talk about the templates all the time. So, our recommendation from TEA and our other legislative... The people that we meet with about legislative topics said, "You need to make sure you do a little more than 30%, because chances are you're going to end up with more money than you may plan for." So, for Bastrop ISD, our actual increase for teachers other than administrators, we put in 2.3 million. So, and then, of the 75% that has to be spent on nurses, counselors, librarians, and teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses, 1.2 million. Bastrop ISD is actually putting in 2 million towards that. And I have some examples on the next slide of just how the raises will work for different categories. So, we put some examples for a teacher that has four years of experience. Her salary for 1819 was $47,315. The salary for 1920 would be $49,444. The other item that we've put in the budget is an increase to our employer contribution for health insurance. This should allow every teacher, every employee, to have a free plan of the high deductible plan for their insurance. So, that's going to be a great help and something we're very excited about, because we haven't been able to raise that employer contribution for many years. And so, employees were paying money out of their pocket for their health insurance. So, it's important for us, for our staff, to have at least one free plan available. So, really, the compensation, if you add the insurance, comes to $50,104. Our four-year teachers, five-years-and-under teachers receive a 4.5% increase under our compensation plan. But when you put the employer contribution with that, that really nets out to almost a 6% increase. And then, likewise, with a 12-year teacher, at a 5% raise, because that's how we differentiated between the teachers with five or more years, you can see the same salary scenario. So, again, a teacher with the 5% ends up with about a 6.4% increase when you add that 5% to the salary and give the employer contribution increase.
And if they choose a better health insurance plan, then they just have a credit towards that.
They still get to... They still get that whole amount, and then, they would still have to pay some out of their pocket. Or if they have their family.
Thank you.
To show some examples of some other categories, because our other staff, besides librarians and teachers, are on a midpoint boxes. So, just to show you how those kind of work as far as counselor. We did a counselor, a teacher, assistant, and assistant principal. So, counselor would receive a 5% increase. And as you can see, a 5% of the midpoint. And so, that teacher, after her insurance and her raise, would... Or that counselor would have about a 6.5% increase. The nature of the boxes is that everyone in a box receives the same amount of raise because it's a percentage of the midpoint. So, if you're lower in the box or higher in the box, your percentage could be less because it's the boxes, and you're getting the increase on the midpoint, not a straight 5%. So, this teaching assistant, for instance, for what they make, by the time you add their insurance contribution, that's almost an 8% increase for that teacher when you net it... Or that teacher assistant. And then, assistant principals, we offered a 4% increase for administrators in this plan. And same with that. It's also a 4% of the midpoint. And so, that assistant principal would have about a 5% increase. So, just to kind of give an example, this is probably the biggest raise I can remember the district ever being able to give. So, we were very excited about that. And also, the insurance increase was awesome.
And my quick, Ms. Callahan, in some of our conversations in the past, this is very exciting. And this is something that's reviewed every year. Of course, they go back into a legislative session in two years. So, if we don't continue to get the money, then, you know, this is... We want to make it clear, and I know they're going to send some information out to the staff that...
Right.
Kind of how this works, so...
The good thing is that Basic Allotment Increase is also tied to teacher salary scale and the minimum pay scale, so that's helpful. So, they would really have to change that state minimum or the basic allotment. So, we're going to hope for the best on that, at least for a few years. On the tax reform, there's a new calculation. It's called the voter-approved rate. It's no longer referred to as a rollback rate. And so, for 1920, I have a slide that has a comparison, but our tax rate now is $1.04 for our MNO, for our maintenance operations for running our schools. So, for 1920, our tax rate will be 97 cents. So, 93 cents plus the 4 cents that we have of our gold and pennies. And then, in 2021, it'll be a little more complicated in that there'll still be a state compression rate. You won't be able to have a tax rate, it's my understanding, over 91.65 cents. But TEA's going to decide what everybody's rollback or voter-approved rate is. Not sure how that's going to happen, but we're going to keep... Stay tuned on that. The good news is, is looking at this, voters will see a 7-cent decrease in their MNO tax rate. So, if your value stayed the same, you would see a decrease in your Bastrop ISD property taxes. But that's good news. Bastrop doesn't have copper pennies, so gold and pennies stay the same. But there will... They will see a decrease in their tax rate. Again, we'll still adopt our tax rate in September, like always. Just some budget assumptions that we're used to seeing. Estimated enrollment, we're planning for about 11,180 kids next year. And our average day-to-day attendance, this is the number that's important because of our... That's based on the actual money we get. So, 10,379. Property values for state aid calculations. This was big news in the legislature as well, with going from prior year's values to current year values. And of course, current year values won out. And so, our appraisal district is here. And that's... The tricky thing about that in using your... In trying to estimate your state aid is you're going to have to guess what the comptroller's values will be. And we don't find out until the preliminary, until January of '20. But we spoke with the appraisal district, and they gave us a good idea of what we should use for our percentage what we should use for our percentage of what our preliminary role was that we got in April. So we're going to keep our fingers crossed and hope that works. Also, that same property values you for tax revenue since we, since, since it's gone to current year values. And this is just a little summary of comparison from 18, 19, so you can see with the dollar four tax rate, our local tax collections with the values that we have was 36 million. And for 19, 20, we're estimating 39.7 million, but that's due to the decrease in the MNO tax rate, even though our values went up. And then the values, property values you use for state aid, just a quick comparison of state aid, 45 million in 18, 19 compared to 54 million in 19, 20. This is just a general funds, the general fund budget summary, so you can see compared from 18, 19 to 19, 20. So you do see we have additional money for next year, and the expenditures are, have increased due to the salaries and some other items you'll see in the, in the presentation that we've outlined. This is actually a summary of the proposed general fund budget revenues, just by a little more categorical, is based on the property taxes, state aid, we do get some federal money that runs through our general fund budget, Charz, MAC, those items. And then our general fund budget, again, we talk about the board adopts the budget by the functional level, so we like to show those numbers and show, of course, instruction is our largest, our, our largest function, and that's everything that happens in a classroom, teachers for students. So for 19, 20, it's about 60.7 million dollars. Now you can see for 19, 20, even with the additional raises, we're looking at right now an excess of about $955,000. Again, this is a conservative estimate, there are still allotments that have, that haven't been finalized on the template, so that's, right now with what, everything we have in the budget, we would still have in excess of $955,000. Spending requirements, as far as the state allotments we talk about, with the state compensatory education, bilingual, current tech, this, the new CCMR, you have to spend a percentage of that money that you receive. So for instance, in state compensatory education, I picked that one because it's a large amount, and it's getting bigger with this new increase, but $11 million is what we estimate we'll receive in 19, 20. We have to spend 55% of that on direct services for those students that are at risk and educationally disadvantaged. So that's about 6.2 million compared to the number of about 4 million last year. So you'll see a line item in the budget. We don't exactly know exactly how we're spending that, but we have that money earmarked because it has to be spent on those students and for those, for those programs. This is just a, a quick show of the total compensation increase that was put into the budget. This adds up because we also have Medicare, workers' comp, TRS that the district has, makes contributions to, that we account those in the compensation package as well. So that's about a $3.3 million increase for the total compensation package. And the other good news is that we were able to raise our beginning teacher pay from 46,300 to 48,200. So hopefully that helps us with recruiting new teachers and new staff. Other budget considerations regarding the payroll, we do have 10 teaching positions for growth in this budget, two additional police officers, and three paraprofessional support staff over and above what we had last year. We do have slotted 815,000 for implementing free, full-day pre-K, because even if you don't implement it completely, you still get your funding for it out of that early education allotment. And then there's the required, additional required spending for the different programs that we need to earmark because we're going to have to decide how we're going to spend that at the campuses on those students. And then the other exciting news is in being able to increase our bilingual stipend from 4,500 to $6,000. So hopefully that helps us with recruiting as well. Yes?
Say that again about the full-day pre-K, about the...
The funding, so we'll receive an allotment for that. And for, looking at just an estimate on the students, it looks like it's about a million dollars. And so I had called the, our legislative contacts and said, "Well, if you don't implement full-day pre-K, do you still get your allotment?" And they said, "Yes, because you have to be planning towards that program." So, so we don't know exactly, I mean, we haven't hired the teachers, we're still in the planning process of how many teachers we're going to need, if we're going to need furnishings and, and the materials. So we've just, that numbers, I've added it into the budget, knowing that we have to spend that on pre-K.
Thank you.
Transportation, the CPI increase in the raises for our bus drivers, and some additional bus routes for next year, and our maintenance CPI increase and a small increase to our appraisal district charge for next year. We also put in some maintenance repairs. I can tell you this will probably have to be amended depending on how it goes, but we do have some maintenance needs, and we know that, and so we're going to continue looking at those, and we will do amendments for that as well. We also have vehicles in for the two new officers, two portable classrooms that are going to be going to Cedar Creek Middle School for their growth, and we'll lease those, and then the setups for that, and also for, for a vehicle for our mail delivery program. That's what, that, that pretty much takes care of the general fund. I'd be glad to answer any questions from the board, the public, but that's kind of the, what we're, what we're getting and what we're spending it on right now, and more to come with what any, with anything else we learn with the legislature.
Well, I know one of our issues is always facilities and space, and so if we're taking on pre-K, the reason you're doing it in those two locations, I know, is because of distance.
And they have, then they have clash in space.
Yeah. So then we'll have to kind of look at the space next year when we have to put it at all the elementaries.
Yes, that's right.
And the two portables, that's at Cedar Creek?
Middle School.
Are there any other questions from the board? Since we do have a public hearing?
Oh, I have a couple more slides, sorry. I just wanted to kind of say that was kind of the closing on the general fund. The debt service budget, as you know, you adopt that as well. This is based on our current tax rate of 40 cents for debt service. We, again, will adopt our tax rate in September, and once we have our certified values. But we're looking at about 16 million in tax revenue. Actually, this is the first year, but we won't qualify for any state revenue for our bond payments because of our values, so, and then of course, our bond payments. And then the food service budget is the other budget that, that board adopts. So this is from 18, 19, 19, 20. Also like to show the federal planning amounts to show that we do get federal money from the government, and those are the areas, these are our planning amounts now. So just some of the other programs and, and the way we receive money, and of course, those have to be spent on those specific programs. I always like to show our fund balance history because we are, we do have a, a plan to put money into our fund balance. It looks like for 18, 19, we certainly will, and if we continue on the plan, we're at for 19, 20, we will as well. So increasing our fund balance to the three months of operating. And of course, always the, the plan of increasing our attendance, because if you increase attendance by 1%, that can give us $600,000 more. So it's a lot of money. And then updating our facilities and trying to find other ways of funding some of those deferred maintenance costs that we have. That is it.
All right. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public, from Ms. Callahan? All right, Sandra, thank you very, very much. It's amazing, I'm seven years on the board, and this is really the first time I got to see you smile when, when Austin gave some money. She, she was, it was a sigh of relief, and then she had some money to work with, and so that was definitely a blessing. And thank, you know, to your team and everybody who was part of this budget, we really do appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. It's been, it's been a good year, and we, I was so happy to see when the bill got signed into law.
Absolutely. All right, this will conclude our public hearing. At this time, I'll make a motion to amend the BISD compensation package and to adopt the 2019, 2020 budget for general debt service and food service. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion from the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you again, Ms. Callahan, we appreciate it. All right, at this time, we're going to move around on the, the agenda here just, just a little bit. We have the Bastrop Central Appraisal District here, they asked to come to our meeting, and we're so thankful they did. Mr. Petrie and Ms. Cullens, and thank you very, very much. And, Mr. Petrie, I want to give a special thanks, but matter of fact, to both of y'all for, for coming in. You probably think it was 20 years ago, but I'm sure, well, maybe three, three years ago, and taking the bull by the horns, and I know that you got that, that appraisal district up to speed and where we need to go, and I know that you asked, went out on a limb and asked for some money to get some things updated, and so we were definitely happy to be able to, to do that, and just hear a lot of positive things out there about how things are being ran over there. So thank you for coming to Bastrop and doing that for us, and Ms. Cullens, thank you as well.
It is a pleasure to be with you and to bid you farewell, I guess, or at least...
Way to go.
Yes. They run him off. It has been a real pleasure to be a, a part of the community for the last three and a half years, and to have been able to see the turnaround occur at the appraisal district. Our focus, and the board's focus from the very beginning was, we want good customer service. The district did not have the best reputations as far as community activities and relationships with the people in the community, and I believe that that's dramatically changed. People never will like taxes, and I don't like them myself, but the, to, for people to feel like that we're being transparent in what we do is critical, to be honest in what we do, people get a straight answer, we don't hide information anymore. So all of those things are, we feel like are very positive that have occurred, and the, the system that has been put in place here will live on because I believe in putting good systems in place, and then you don't have to worry, just like education, if you have the right systems, the people will learn. So that's exactly what we've done. And Fawn Cullens, who is, has been a rising star at the appraisal district, she has served in other districts in other states, and so she came to Bastrop to retire, and thankfully didn't, and she has done an amazing job in supervising our appraisal staff and to get all of our, our data in, in a correct form where we pass all of the tests now. And your PVS, of course, you're completely back in grace, you don't have to worry about failing anymore and losing state funding. So all of those kinds of things are attributable to the staff. I am thankful that I had the opportunity to be here and maybe show them a few ideas, and then we now have a software in place that allows us to be very efficient in what we do. The, the people gather data in the field with iPads, and it goes up in the cloud, there's no more data entry for those things. So just, it just worked out very nicely, and it was an expensive process, but it's paid for. We, we paid for it early with the savings that we have had, and so that will enable Fawn to move forward without a, a debt hangover the district's budget. So without further ado, let me introduce you officially to the new chief appraiser for Bastrop County effective August 1. And, and then I'll be holding her hand, not literally, but figuratively for the next 12 months, and then I, I don't think she'll need a lot of hand-holding, but anyway, I'll be there at her beck and call in case she needs me. So without further ado, she's got a little report for you.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, so thank you, thank you for the opportunity to meet each, each of you this evening. I look forward to working with you in the next few years, and I just have to say, it's a wonderful community. My husband and I love Bastrop. We have a granddaughter, she's up at Lost Pines, and it's, it's, we're just excited to be here. And, excuse me, and where are we going to go from here? Well, with values, they're probably going to go up. We're a growing county, and the exciting things that we have for you is, I passed out, had them pass out to you, the values of where we stand right now as of yesterday, and through our hearing process, and where we were. So as of yesterday, Bastrop ISD was at $4,555,500 and some change there. It's up about 11.7%. Of that increase, 130 million is new growth or new value. That's value that's not been on the tax roll, and that can be either in new construction or, as Mr. Petrie says, we've been in the field, we've been using iPads, it's property that has not been on the tax roll at all. Our goal by the end of December is that we're going to be visiting properties every three years. The IWAO, which is the International Association of Assessing Officers, has a standard of every six years, and that's what the state follows. When they come in and they check us, they want to make sure we've been on the property every six years. Our goal, every three. And we would love within the next three years to have that down to every one, if we can. New things that we're implementing come this fall. Our appraisers in the field, technology, won't have to hang a tape on a house, they're going to go to distal measuring, they're going to be able to use electronic tools to measure homes and not have to be on the property. We're excited about that. We're going to fly the county this fall. We're going to have aerial imagery that in January, we're going to get together with all the other entities and show them the new enhancements that we're going to have with aerial imagery, and how your school district might be able to utilize these imageries for your services. And we're excited about that. It's going to get us on property that we can't, physically can't get on. And that's going to help with new growth, that's important. That's important in the budgeting and calculating all your, your, your rates. A little information about the appeals, of course, every year we set out an invitation for you to come visit us. We have to have some humor, okay? And we love seeing people, we really do. So as of, we started our appeals April 25th, April 15th was the, when we mailed them out. As soon as we started getting appeals in, our appraisers were sitting down and having a conversation. We have logged in 4,011, and this is countywide, this just is not just for Bastrop ISD. We have held 2,225, we have settled 1,938, and that's running about 87%. And our goal is to get that up to 95%, where we're closing those out informally in the months of June, so that by the time we get to certification, I would really love to see that number maybe roll in that 98% of the value is certifiable, and I would love it, and it, maybe my goal within the next three to five years, that you're seeing all the value. We're not holding hearings after certification. There will probably still be changes and supplements with exemptions and stuff, but that's some of our goals to, to better service our entities also. The only thing I have to say is, when you talk with the individuals, if they're not happy with that value, and they filed an appeal on time, tell them, "We just want to have a conversation, and we want to see if we can come to a resolution." And I just thank you for the time, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. I've, I've had the privilege, just brought free leave, to, to visit with, with Ms. Cullens a couple years, and, and her passion, I think you got the right pick. She's very, very fair, very knowledgeable individual, and I think you're going to do a really great job. I was excited about hearing because I knew that y'all were looking for somebody to, you know, pass the reins and take this on in, in a permanent matter. So thank you for, for what y'all do, and I'm excited about the direction that, that y'all are going. So thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, for respect for some of our guests we have here, I'd like to call up communities and schools for their presentation. We have Sue Keith Steinhouser with us, thank you very much for, for coming in. We have some other exciting things on the agenda, but we figured we'd bump you up a little bit here.
Just couldn't wait.
I understand, couldn't wait.
Thanks.
No, because I just brought a little extra. They have their...
But, but you've got our, our slides, and I really want to keep it short, you have a really long agenda, but it's so nice to be here on a night where it's being announced what the state, what the legislature has done. And when y'all say, you know, when Austin takes care of us, that's not really me or anybody up there, but it is at the legislature, and we are feeling it all over the state, and you know that we've been feeling it for years, that we didn't have the resources that we need. So we're really excited at communities and schools to have the opportunity to come and serve this district. I'll have to tell you that back in the fall, we did a mapping study of the whole state and where the needs were, based on a whole number of, of different aspects of student need. And we found that Bastrop County had a lot of need, and, and it's something that we knew intellectually, but when you see it on a map, because this county or that county has a little different shading, it just kind of brings it into relief. So when your leadership here contacted us about the possibility of us coming to serve the district, we were really excited about that because the opportunity to meet students' needs so that they can be successful in school is what we're all about. So do I, I do the clicker? Okay. So I'll, I'll be, I'll talk really fast so that we can go slow, and you can answer any, I can answer any questions you may have. This little graphic shows, it's, it's our theory of change, we, what we say, this is what we do in order to get results. And it starts with that heart over on the left side. We believe strongly in relationships between caring adults and students, and there's loads, you know, just piles and piles of research that shows that that's the case. But it's not any relationship, it is truly the caring relationship that has a kind of a therapeutic value. And if you remember being a kid, when there was a coach who cared about you, or a mentor, or a special aunt or uncle, or a neighbor, there, you really thrive in the, in the presence of that. We work on kids' social, emotional, and academic competencies so that then they begin, begin to be successful in their classes, they attend school more, and their behavior improves, and ultimately it leads to not only lower dropout rates and higher graduation rates, but really success in life, more access to post-secondary opportunities, and just the whole set of skills that people need to navigate our world. This is our model, it's very complicated, but it boils down to a couple of things. We put a great person on campus, almost always a master's-level social worker, that person works with the school leadership really closely, the principal, but also others on the school campus, to figure out what the needs are on campus, and how can we go into the community or get a grant, or ourselves meet those needs. And it's, it's a very organized approach to what can be a very complicated set of circumstances that kids are presenting with in, on, on campus. We deliver the services right there on school, the school campus, so that we're not sending a kid out with a referral, and we hope that they go see a doctor, or they hope, we hope that they go, you know, get some resource, we make sure they're getting the resources that they need on, on campus. And after we provide those resources, we evaluate how we're doing, we adjust during the course of the year, and throughout the year, we communicate very closely and report back to the principal and others on the campus, because it is truly about that partnership. If we're not closely partnered, it doesn't work. And when we are closely partnered, we just, we can just be more than the sum of those parts. This is a national program, you don't need to know all about that, but that does give us access to a lot of good resource, research, resources, and it gives us a network that we can connect with to figure out what are the best, newest, and most practical ways to meet needs. This, this is a map that just shows, you know, income distribution in our region. We're really committed to serving this district, but this also shows that we serve Austin, Del Valley, about to be serving Elgin, Hayes, Lockhart, and Maynor. The CIS program adapts to different types of communities. The CIS program adapts to different types of communities, and we get to know the community really well, because we're not about, like, coming in as outsiders and telling you what you need to do. This is really a true, deep partnership. This is data on the students that we serve. Among all of our districts currently, 85% of them are, qualify for a free and reduced lunch. Many of them are English-language learners or in special ed. A large number have been previously retained. Some have incarcerated parents or are homeless. Some of these are under-reported, because they're embarrassing issues sometimes, but it doesn't matter. They don't have to be embarrassed. If they come to CIS, we're going to help them, in a way that they feel safe and respected. CIS is a turnkey program. I like this idea. I don't know, turnkey, just, I just feel like, it just feels like you just walk in the door, and there it is. What we bring to you as an organization that's been around since 1985 is lots of highly-trained staff. We don't put rookies out there. We not only train them, but then we support them. We use data-driven practices. You know, we both keep good data, but we're always looking at it and analyzing it to see where we can do better. We make sure our staff, you know, following industry trends, it's kind of a funny way to say it, but we make sure we're up on the latest techniques and ways of working with students that have lots of challenges. We carry insurance, so their risk is taken care of, and we are able to do a whole variety of consultation with both that peer network, but also other professionals in the fields that are needed. We want to surround our students with a community of support, and we start with that program manager. We add other staff to that. We have university interns, community mentors, and community partners. That one person that we place on campus, their job is partly to amplify their impact by leveraging. So, I'm going to make sure that you get, in this, I'm giving you a copy of our annual report, but there's a volunteer brochure in there, so I just want to plant a seed that we coordinate a lot of volunteers, and they work as mentors, as tutors, some of them are reading buddies, some of them come and just help with something that the school needs, maybe translation, any number of things. So I'm just kind of planting that seed, that we work with you on that. I need to hurry up. Okay, we deliver services Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. I'm not going to go into the details, but the idea is, Tier 1 is the whole school, you know, something that helps everyone, maybe a school-wide campaign on anti-bullying, or a school-wide, maybe a penny drive, so that we can make a contribution to the food bank, so that the students have that experience of giving back, those kinds of things. Tier 2 would be something more like working with kids in groups that have a common issue, maybe grief or loss. They've lost somebody, and they need to have the opportunity to talk to someone, and being in a group with others. And then Tier 3, it's more intensive case management, where they're getting very individualized services, because they need additional support. And so we have the ability and the structure to do all of those things. Again, in close collaboration with the counselors on campus, or whatever other resources are there, and really partnering even very much so with the teachers, because sometimes the teacher is the one who first calls to our attention that a student has some needs. The environment usually, I'm sure that the elementary principals are scrambling to find space for, I just heard that, I just heard that space might be in short supply. It's, uh-oh. Sometimes we start in a little bit of space, and eventually we work up to it. But I have visited CIS offices that were in janitor's closets, and room closets, and bookrooms, but I really hope it's not that bad here. But, you know, we work with what we can get, because at the end of the day, it's really about the relationships we're forming. But having adequate space allows us to have that calm, soothing, friendly environment that helps kids to, you know, be able to kind of set their baggage down when they come in, really to feel safe and supported. So, our offices usually have, like, comfy furniture, and nice pillows, and natural light. And that's because we want kids to be able to make the most of their time when they're with us, and get to a better place than maybe they were when they came in the door. So we do lots of things, like, this is showing literally sand therapy. This person is trained in a special kind of therapy. You'll see all kinds of things in CIS offices that look like it's playtime, but there's really purpose behind it. And so again, it's about that caring adult, or those caring adults. And we also want to make sure kids are just getting the resources they need. It could be anything from a, you know, a toothbrush, to, you know, a book to read over the weekend, to an appointment with a dentist, or to, there's a dental theme here. I think it must be time for me. And then we have really great outcomes. Our elementary kids, of course, 99% stay in school. Elementary kids don't usually drop out of school, but they stay in school, complete the year, enrolled in school. 96 are promoted to the next grade, 85% maintain a strong attendance rate, and 88% of them improve their academics, behavior, and attendance. And remember, these are students that are referred to us, or we say recommended, but recommended to CIS, because something pretty significant is going on in their life, so we have to work hard with them on all those things. Feeling better is the first thing, but then after that, it's how do we work on all of those other things? This is just, it ain't bragging if it's so, and here's some brags that we got from some of our teachers and administrators, and the other schools that we serve. It's really important to us, what people think about the services, because at the end of the day, again, it's about that partnership and working together. And it's very, very important that the school districts that we serve have significant skin in the game. They pay for a portion of the services, but we have a shared cost model, where we're raising about half the cost of services, not including in-kind and so forth, but we don't want the schools that we have to serve to really have to scramble to pay to have CIS. We do have this shared cost model. And these are some of the sources that we typically use. We have funds from TEA, from some municipalities, federal grants, and a lot of private funding that we raise. And again, we're fortunate, like Michael and Susan Dell live in central Texas, so they'll be subsidizing your CIS program, and St. David's Foundation, they'll be subsidizing your program. But it's kind of takes a village. And we're already working with your team. It's really fantastic to have had at least a few months' notice, so that we can get on, get on board, and get ready to go from day one. So, we're thrilled to be working with you. I think that we're going to be able to really give great support to your students that are struggling with a variety of different issues, and help them to reach their potential. So, did I, did I go fast enough?
You did good. Thank you very much. It's really great to see these resources coming into our communities. We had the privilege last week of getting our school board hours, and it was amazing, because different schools are doing it differently. But, you know, from one of our peace officers, to our truancy officers, to a counselor, there's a reason a child's not coming to school, and there's a reason, a lot of times, that you can visit with them and basically stop something bad that may happen, or they may want to share with you what somebody else is doing. But it could be clothes, it could be food. Just a curiosity question, Mr. Edwards, is from Jacob's Closet to, I know we're doing some things with the food services, to the clinic we have going on now, plus this, who kind of coordinates this, and is there like a checklist of resources, if we were to get a call, to say, who do we put them in contact with?
Yeah, so there's a good way to start, is at the campus. But Norma Mirka, where's, is she still, I think, yeah, she just stepped out through the clinic. What this does, this fills a very huge gap that we've had, and we cannot, we're so excited that you all are back with us in this partnership. Then we can refer straight to our clinic, but we'll work through Norma and the social worker on each elementary site.
Yeah, that's awesome. Such a great need here. So again, very familiar with the organization, and thank you for coming out tonight, and getting back in the mix with us. We appreciate it.
We bet. We're really glad to be back. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, Dr. Oliveris, you're sitting there smiling, and I hope you have some exciting news for us with that smile. Come on up. We're going to do our public hearing on proposed application for an optional flexible school day.
Yes.
Program for 2019, 2020.
Communities and schools warms my heart. So, thank you, Suki. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out.
Yes, thank you for coming out.
Sincerely, we appreciate it.
Okay, so good evening, Mr. Mutchink, Mr. Edwards, members of the board, and the public. Tonight, we come to you in a public forum to have a hearing, to bring to you OFSDP, Optional Flexible School Day Program. We need to walk you through a report for the 1819 school year. And then we also want to ask for you to consider an approval for us to submit an application to the Texas Education Agency for OFSDP for the following school year, 2019, 2020. So, let's begin our public hearing. So the goal of the OFSDP is to improve graduation rates. And I do believe, as a former high school principal, that this is a wonderful program to give us that platform. You know, I believe that all students have their own path, and not every student goes the traditional high school route. But improving graduation rates helps everyone in our community, especially those students and their families. So, in Bastrop ISD, Genesis Alternative High School serves as our BISD OFSDP site. So an annual application to the Texas Education Agency is required, so that we can maintain that site, and we can operate basically flexible hours and days of attendance for our students. So as part of this application process, we are required to hold this public hearing, which we're doing tonight, to review the performance of the program, so Genesis High School last year, and then also to tell you what's going into the application for next year. What do we want to propose? What are the commitments from the campus? What are the commitments from the district, in order to get this optional flexible school day program going? So first, the portion of our review of our data from the 2018, 2019 school year. This is what the Texas Education Agency requests, and this is what we're going to provide them. We had 197 students enrolled. They earned a total of 749 full credits this past year. We had 120 graduates, and I believe 100% of yous were at the graduation, so we thank you for that. It was a wonderful event. We do have to report number of withdrawn students. These are students that go back to home country, or transfer to another school district. All of that is captured within this larger number of withdrawn students, and that's 31. We also track our students that returned back to a regular high school. That was 45 for us. Number that transferred, Del Valley, you know, we're transient as districts, was 20. We did have nine dropouts that we are tracking actively, and we did have one student incarcerated. So this is the data that we are going to report for our 2018, 2019 school year. So, now we want to go into the public hearing portion of what goes into an application for next year. And I thought this quote was really, really apropos for this work. If you work around at-risk teen students, actually telling them you love them and have faith in their success, no one tells them that, no one. And so this is what I believe encompasses the mission of all of the educators that work at Genesis Alternative High School. I believe, and I've always felt, that they take very good care of our students in a different setting, and provide different opportunities for them. So here we go, our proposed application for next year. Let's begin with who is eligible to participate in OFSDP. So students have to meet one of the following criterias. And for us in our district, the first two are the ones that are applicable. The student is at risk of dropping out of school, and the student, as a result of attendance requirements, is going to be denied credit for one or more classes. So those are statute, Texas Education Code, chapters 29 and 25, respectively. Additionally, if we had an early college high school program that we were partnering with, you could then have that program qualify for OSFDP. That's not our early college high school situation. If the student is attending a school implementing an approved Innovatives Campus Plan, or if they're attending a community-based dropout recovery program. So, we also have to describe for the Texas Education Agency, what are our local procedures for identifying students? And I want you to know, both of our comprehensive high schools have counselors, and social workers, and principals that are constantly looking at our students, and who needs what. And this is always a viable option for some of our students at risk. First of all, in terms of our local procedures, our students must submit a written application, and if they're under the age of 18, secure parental permission, or guardian permission. They have to meet with their assigned counselor and administrator to discuss the alternative high school program, which includes those hours of flexibility. So kind of what is it that you're trying to get out of your high school experience, and here's what they could provide for you there. The students must be identified as at-risk, so they have to meet the state qualifications for that, or will be denied credit for one or more classes. And then once our counselors analyze transcripts, approval is given, and the student is admitted to the program. What is unique about Genesis High School is, there is an actual meeting, an intake that happens, a very personalized, and it is not a, let's spend 20 minutes with each child. This is a long meeting with our Genesis administrative team, their counselors, the student, the parents, if they're available, and if they do have parents or guardians, we do ask them to come into the meeting. And they really go through everything. They go through number of referrals that the student has had throughout their high school career. They go through transcript information, they go through credits, and they formulate a plan with the parents as partners here at our Genesis High School. I think that's one of the things that really stands out about our program, and that I truly love. So, we're also going to talk a little bit with you about, in our proposed application, about the staffing. So we have seven and a half teachers, that includes all core CTE and special education. We have one counselor, one full-time nurse, one assistant principal, one principal. Six out of seven of our teachers currently there are ESL-endorsed, and students do receive special education support, English language support, counseling, specifically for college and career planning. That's part of our requirement, so they receive that there. And then also pregnancy-related services, or PRS, as needed by our full-time nurse. The schedule, we have a day school. The hours of operation are 8:30 to 4:00, Monday through Friday, and then there is always an option for after-school, Monday through Thursday, for about 45 minutes for tutorials. So what are the goals? The goals for a Genesis Alternative High School program is to have 100% of our enrolled students stay. So we need them to stay. This is about increasing our graduation rates, getting them to the finish line in a different type of program. So getting them to stay or return to their high school program, and not drop out of school. That's our bottom line. And then 100% of the students, we also have a goal, will show performance gains on state assessments. As we know, students have to pass their, and of course, STAR assessments, and some of the students that Genesis serves owe us, you know, sometimes all of the tests. And so we do have to work to get them to pass those state exams. All right, so what do we agree in the application? So we agree that we're going to administer state assessments during the regular testing cycle. We have to adhere by that statute. We agree that we're going to provide instruction at the high school level grade. So where they're enrolled, what credits they need, we agree that we're going to give them that. We agree that we're not going to isolate them from vocational education programs. That's why we have a career and technology education teacher on staff, and that the students will have access to a counselor. So, we meet that criteria. We agree to provide knowledgeable, highly-qualified teachers and staff for the program. I believe everybody who works at Genesis Alternative High School truly has a heart for serving the students who attend that program. And then also, we agree to adopt a policy to have our kiddos who attend have the option for flexible school day program. And then there's also a new subset of that, that says, even though our students are required to come minimally for attendance purposes, 45 minutes daily, of course, our students come for more time, if applicable, we do have now the right to file truancy charges, if we so see fit. All right, so we also agree to comply with all reporting requirements that the TEA has for us, and then also that if a student wants to participate in UIL, that they have to meet all of the eligibility criteria as all other students. All right, so the campus has to agree to one main feature, and that is to not discriminate based on disability, race, color, national origin, religion, or sex. So we have to consider all applicants who want to come into our alternative high school setting. Just additionally, as an aside goal for us at Genesis Alternative High School, we track all dropouts actively, and pursue recovery efforts where we can. So, for the 2018, 2019 students, all Genesis Alternative High School students participated in the Optional Flexible School Day Program. And for 1920, we want to publicly designate, once again, Genesis Alternative High School as Bastrop ISD OFSDP program. So, do we have questions from the board, or from the public at this time?
All right. Thank you very much for that presentation. We appreciate your hard work in bringing that to us.
Yes, we're excited to have this program. I believe it serves our students and our community very well. Finally, lastly, I just recommend that you consider approval for our application for next year.
All right, this time, that will conclude our public hearing, and I will make a motion to submit an application for an Optional Flexible School Day Program, which is OFSDP for eligible students for the 2019, 2020 school years. Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a second. Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Oliver. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the support greatly.
This time we'll move into our superintendent's report and board discussion. It looks like we have end-of-the-year student health advisory council update and we have our district head nurse here, Diane Rodriguez. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. So you have in your agenda packets the cover for the topics that we actually talked about this year during our SHAC meeting. We had three SHAC meetings and we had multiple, multiple different topics to present this year. So Superintendent Edwards, Board President, Mr. Mutic, and Board of Trustees, it's my pleasure to share with you this year's report. Over the past year, like I said, we had a total of three previous meetings with various topics. What I'd like to call your attention to is primarily the topic of naloxone, also known as Narcan, which is an opioid antagonist that is used to reverse the effects of an opioid drug overdose. During the past school year, there were few occasions at the high school level where this medication could have been used to reverse the effects while waiting for emergency personnel to arrive. During the SHAC meeting, there were discussions of naloxone and they were entertained during the last meeting in May to the committee to look at pursuing a local policy to adopt and allow the high school nurses to offer this medication to students grades nine through 12. There is a legal policy that was adopted by the board in 2018, which was part of the update 112. The legal policy says that we have, we can have standing orders from a physician in addition to the guidance on how to recognize signs and symptoms of the opioid overdose and when and how to administer the nasal medication. It comes in a prefilled spray and it's four milligrams and it's .1, so it's just a really small amount of medication. So at this meeting, the last meeting that was held, the SHAC committee wanted to move forward with looking at adopting a local policy. The initial grant funding is available through Adapt Pharma, which is a one-year grant for grades nine through 12 that would cover the initial cost of the medication, which is approximately $125 a box for two units of this medication. Unfortunately, it's only a one-year grant. Then the district looks at having to provide the medication at cost. With the House bill that was passed adding school safety and security funding, that's one of the possible funding sources that you could look at purchasing this medication for the high schools. Now, it would only be grades nine through 12, so you're only looking at your four campuses, your Genesis Circa, Bassrop High School, Cedar Creek High School, and Gateway. In addition, it would require training, the staff that would be administering the medication, as well as considering whether or not you want to offer this to your middle school Adapt Pharma can also offer a reduced price, but since we didn't apply for the grant to get it this year, since we don't have a local policy at this time, I don't know what that actual cost is, so that $125 cost is what's available out there in the market. In addition, Senator Nelson's bill 435 passed, which now charges local school health advisory councils to recommend opioid addiction and abuse education in schools, which adds to the following, the school-coordinated health program. So therefore, we're now challenged with determining what appropriate grade level and curriculum for instruction regarding opioid abuse and addiction for administering an opioid antagonist. And that goes into effect September 1st. It may take approximately six to eight months before the Texas Department of Health and Human Services and TDA come up with a guidance and update school board policies that will further define the use and the education on the opioid overdose and use of naloxone.
So they will come up with what grade levels we educate about this?
They will provide the guidance to the SHAC and then the SHAC will look at what is the appropriate curriculum to use and present to start educating whatever appropriate grade levels they decide.
So our local SHAC, it sounds like, decides?
As we understand it, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
They'll set some guidelines out, with probably some suggested grade levels, and then we'll make a local decision.
Yeah.
And then put it into local policy.
And the shelf life on the drug is roughly?
One to two years.
Okay. And it probably needs to be in a controlled environment?
It would be...
I mean, climate-controlled or?
Yes. And what we would have to do is come up with, our goal is primarily to keep it in the nurse's office or have our police officers carry it.
That's what I was going to ask.
So that is one of my suggestions, is that we look at the two sources primarily being our SROs and our nurses to have access to that. Of course, our teachers are the ones that bring those students to our attention, that they suspect that the student may be under the influence. And so there is, the National Association of School Nurses has actually created a position statement along with an algorithm and the guidelines on how to identify if a student is exhibiting the signs and symptoms of an opioid overdose. So some of our students, you know, the biggest question we get is, is this going to hurt a student if we give them, to them, and it's not an opioid? No, it's not. It's going to potentially save the life of a student who may have opioids onboard. And in their interim, while we're waiting on emergency medical response teams to arrive, we as nurses or officers have this medication available to potentially save a life. So that, you know, the cost versus the benefits, the risk is, in spending $500, less than $500 is probably going to be a better investment to making sure that our students are safe and well-protected until we can get EMS staff to arrive.
You said, at the beginning of the presentation, you said there were how many kids last year that you would have thought, you'd probably have used this on?
There were two that were identified and I'm sure there are more that have, that we have encountered, but it's been, they haven't really exhibited the symptoms of having a true overdose. Now with this comes getting our medical consultant on board to write standing orders and I still have to set up a meeting to meet with the medical consultant. And I do have an ER doctor as well that is willing to look at the information and possibly write for it in the event our medical consultant isn't. Because if you, this physician's in primary practice, so nobody goes into his office saying, "I'm having an opioid overdose." Most of them show up in the emergency room, so it would be more appropriate to have an emergency room physician write for it than a medical director that consults.
Just last question, are you seeing any signs on our elementary students possibly getting the stuff at home and taking it maybe just because it was around or maybe they're aware of it?
We haven't seen it at elementary, but that doesn't mean that it's not happening. We see kiddos come with Pepto-Bismol bottles to school because, you know, they snuck out the door with it in their backpack. And so it's possible. Most of our kiddos are getting these medications from home because they're not locked up.
Right.
I did have a opportunity to sit on the Travis County Substance Abuse Prevention Summit and there were several students that were high school and college students and the topic brought up again was Narcan in schools. And several of the students had said, if somebody would have just identified when I was having discipline issues, that I had a mental health disorder, I wouldn't have gotten into drugs, I wouldn't have gotten into trouble, and I wouldn't have ended up abusing substances. So with this legislation that was passed, it helps for us because we're able to teach not just the teachers, not just the staff, we're able to educate the other students, hey, you can help your friend if you suspect that they're having a crisis with an opioid.
Would it be practical, or more practical, to have it available in every officer's vicinity as well?
Yes.
So, I mean, something they would carry in their car potentially?
Yes. And actually, right now, I don't know if any of you have gone and filled a prescription for a narcotic. They do offer a Narcan spray if you need it in the event you yourself, who may have had a procedure, may experience an overdose if you take maybe an extra dose. So that is becoming a standard of practice. And it is available free. You can walk into the pharmacy and ask for it and it's available for free. I also wanted to share with you as well, because I learned at this summit, that there is an actual THC inhaler that is circulating the market, that looks like an inhaler, and it costs anywhere from $60 to $100. And it looks, and it has 100-meter doses of THC. So not only are kids going to be vaping Marinol and CBD oil now that that law has passed in as well, that Texas can produce hemp, we also have THC inhalers that our kids coming, may be potentially coming to school with. So other things to make you more aware of out there.
How do you identify versus someone's got a prescription for?
So this particular, there's two brands. It's green in it and it's white, and then there's a Carlos Santana brand. So it varies anywhere from $60 to $100 and you could go online right now, Google THC inhaler and it will pop up and you can purchase it.
Chief, have fun.
Does, do the students who are using inhalers per prescription, are those kept on the student? Are they kept to the nurse or how is that?
So we do have to have asthma action plans that identify students that can self-administer their inhalers according to the asthma bill. So it has to be properly labeled, they have to have their action plan, and then we also make a note in the computer that the student is allowed to self-administer their inhaler. So there are processes there. The other thing that just passed yesterday, I believe, that was signed into law was House Bill 496, which addresses bleeding control kits. So those are the Stop the Bleed, the training that the nurses and the officers did in January. So TEA, again, will provide the guidance on the online training that will be approved. And then by January of 2020, every campus is supposed to have a bleeding control kit. Again, looking at possibly using your funding from your school and safety dollars. Those average about $50 a kit.
And I'm going to keep beating this drum, but, you know, we need trauma kits as well. We need more than one person trained at these campuses, Red Rock, Lost Pines. I know that our transportation service was talking about training their drivers as well because we get on these rural roads in this response time. And that's why I was asking about, you know, even some of this stuff with opioids, even in all of our campuses, there's an exposure. And so just definitely being prepared just due to the response time that's out there.
I do know that Comal ISD, the nurse there, was able to, whatever was left in her end-of-the-year budgets, she was able to buy bleeding control kits for every single classroom on all of her campuses.
Yeah, that's awesome. It's not a good feeling as a nurse or anybody rendering aid or even one of our peace officers to be waiting 15, 20 minutes for an ambulance to get there. I've been there and done that and that's the longest time of your life to help somebody, so.
Isn't that law, wasn't, isn't it high school students?
For, yes, for the, no, it's all campuses.
All campuses.
For the, for House Bill 496, but for Narcan is, and we did, I didn't read on the training specific, I just got the news flash today and so I didn't see the specifics on high school students, but I did, last, actually, May 9th, we trained all of the Circa High School seniors on Stop the Bleed. So the premier ER helped coordinate getting all the volunteers to come out and do a hands-on training. And so we sent 48 students that graduated from Circa with Stop the Bleed training. So those are the main highlights that are, we're kind of looking at at SHAC for the upcoming year. It is my recommendation that in the interim, that we at least attempt to get the standing order, since we do have a legal policy that will cover us with Narcan for standing orders and we do have position statements and templates from the National Association of School Board, I mean, of school nurses, in addition to several school districts like New Braunfels, Comal are currently stock it on their campuses. So that's my recommendation. I just want to share a couple of things that Mayor Schrader on, in April, recognized all of our nurses at the city council for National School Nurses Day and proclaimed May 8th as the National School Nurse Day. Just a little update on how many students our nurses are actually returning back to class. We're returning about 91% of our students back to class. That 9%, I think, has to do with that text message that goes out to mom and dad and says, "I don't feel good, can you come pick me up?" I think the only real way to get around that is if that absence is unexcused when they go home. Their absence is excused if they are sick, even if their parent picks them up and they haven't gone through the nurse's office. Last year, we returned 90% of those students back, so we did a little bit better this year. We saw about 84,000 students in our nurse's office and medicated over 18,000, administered over 18,000 medications. Last year, we administered 15,000 medications, so a pretty good increase in 2,500 medications to our kiddos. So there are a lot more kids coming to school with a lot more medications. Again, you know, some of them are ADHD meds, some of them are your psychotropics, and so it's just really getting pretty complex in the nurse's office. Then, I want to take this time to thank Mr. Edwards and the Board of Trustees. June 24th will be my last day with the district. I've taken a position outside of Bassrop to grow as a nurse administrator. I'm grateful for the opportunity to have served 10 years as your head nurse, 13, in the school district. I've learned a lot about education, educational programming, test scores, ratings, policy and procedures, attendance, truancy, pregnancy-related services, IHPs, and the list is endless. Bassrop has taught me the educational side of things. It's very different from a hospital setting. You are the only nurse in that office and you're relying on non-nurses. I was given this wonderful opportunity by Ginger Myers, who hired me in 2006 when my daughter started kindergarten. She hired me and then I had a wonderful mentor, Margaret Ryan, who moved over to middle school and she mentored me for three years and then I became head nurse. She mentored me for an additional year and then she retired. So then I was left to be head nurse for nine years without Margaret. And in her absence, I was moved over to CCIS and had Sean Adams help me to problem-solve and tackle those hypothetical non-nursing questions. I've had the pleasure of working with Mary Hernandez, Doc Washington, Barry Edwards during budget cut years.
Thank you.
Michael Granados, Dr. Lori Bauer, Camille Smith, Tessie Young, Henry Gideon, Mark Willoughby, Bob Jones, and Andy Sexton. Each one of these individuals continued to educate me on how to be a servant leader and how to have that difficult conversation and to listen. Thank you, Andy, for being the health services leader that we needed. He takes time to come in, to listen to the nurses, to check... in, to listen to the nurses, to check on them when they go to an ER. And just is, more importantly, a kind and genuine person. You taught me some good life lessons and personal ones, too. I'd like to thank Linda Olivares, who's no longer with us, because I think I drove her to retirement. And last but not least, Nancy B., who helped me with whatever, whenever I called, sent me numbers, the policies and procedures, the administrative guidelines, surveys to be done, state reports to be entered, phone calls and emails about the complaints of our LICE policy. So, thank you, Nancy, for being there and for all that you've done. This is not a goodbye. My youngest daughter's still going to be in the district. I'm not moving out of Cedar Creek, because I like living in the country and I'm not a city girl. I am proud to be from this community. I will never forget where I started. And it's because of Bastrop ISD and where I am today, that I'm moving on to my new position. Because without the skills and experience I've gained here, I would not have gotten the position I got. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart, and God bless you.
Diana, thank you. Before you walk out, you left this place better than when you found it. And we appreciate everything that you've done. You've been an advocate ever since I met you from the very beginning. And we've been through some tough times, and we've accomplished some great things. So again, thank you. I wish you the best moving forward.
Well, and I'm here for whoever fills my shoes and they have my cell phone.
You bet. We'll be calling. Thank you.
All right, as we move along on the agenda, the bilingual ESL Education and Annual Program Report is for informational only. And finally, the BISD librarian media specialist have been waiting so patiently, and we really do appreciate it. We see you out there, and they're smiling. So, yes, Emily Bain, would you please bring them up for a presentation?
Yes, absolutely. So first, I feel like I should publicly apologize to them, because we moved to June, because I was like, this will be a quick, a quick meeting. So I apologize. Please come up. We've got over fifty percent of our current librarians, library media specialists present. We have Chris Fiebrich from Mina Elementary, Sarah Thompson from Bastrop Intermediate, Rohana Hollingsworth is from, this thing keeps falling, from Red Rock Elementary. We have Andrea Napier from Cedar Creek Intermediate. And then we have Patty Nix from Bluebonnet Elementary, who is also our head librarian for the district. And so, I'm going to let them take it away. While they're presenting, they're going to be passing out a token of our appreciation to represent both the literacy that they, they, you know, help with each campus, as well as our media specialists. You have a 3D printed bookmark among this package of books. And so, I'm going to let Ms. Patty and Ms. Chris take over.
Hi, and thank you so much for letting us be here tonight. We're going to be quick. I'm happy to give you the books and the bookmark, which we're especially proud of. I hope you will take the books and share them with the young people in your life, or maybe even yourself. That one about rock, paper, scissors is especially funny. So make sure you read that one. Our purpose here today is to thank you and also to inform you of what great things are going on in the Bastrop ISD libraries. Three years ago, you guys reinstated all the library positions. And now, every school in our district has its own certified librarian. That means that person has taught in the classroom, they went on to get a master's degree in library science. And those people are highly qualified. And we're so proud that in this district, you guys believe, and, oh, thank you so much, in the power and influence of librarians. And you showed that by putting one at each school. Now, how do we work this? Look at that! It moved. Okay. So, we believe that our impact is far-reaching and long-lasting. And I'm not going to read that slide, you can read it yourself. But we proudly serve every student and every teacher in our schools with resources, books, lessons, and even professional development for our teachers. The libraries in BISD are a huge investment. Some of them have upwards of five hundred thousand dollars worth of resources. And we are committed to being good stewards of that investment that you have made in our schools. And I'll show you in a little bit, some actual numbers for money and materials that were added this year. We believe that our libraries can support the mission of BISD. We would like to invite you to our campuses. When you come to our campus, you will see traditional lessons and storytime and children reading. But you'll also see some non-traditional things. You'll see 3D printers. You'll see kindergarten nurse coding. If you don't know what that is, you need to come and watch. You will see things like Ozobots. And you will see our kids taking virtual reality field trips with Google Expeditions. These are all things that we do in our libraries. There has been extensive research by Keith Curry Lance that shows highly qualified librarian and a highly, high-quality program impact our schools. They increase graduation rates, they increase test scores, and it increases academic mastery of standards. So, we are here to say that we are committed to seeing actual measurable results from what you guys have done by putting us in the schools. We want to see those things increase. And I'm going to let Ms. Fiebrich show you a couple of the awesome things that have been happening in our schools, some numbers and some cool pictures of what's going on.
Got to turn it down here. As you can see on the PowerPoint there, there have been two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-five books and eBooks circulated in our libraries just this year. And that's about twenty-one books per student. It's probably a little higher than that, because not every one of our eBooks and interactive books are in our catalog. So sometimes they're using them in the library or in their classrooms, but they're accessing them through a website and a password for our campus. And so, it's probably a little bit higher than that. And the next slide says that we have taught eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy classes. And that is based on our schedules. And most of us have a fixed, somewhat fixed schedule at the elementary levels, because that's what our teachers prefer. At the higher levels, there was a little bit more of a flexible schedule. And we have the option of either one, which is nice to have in this district. But we pretty much try to do what the teachers prefer. We are trying really hard to encourage our administrators and our teachers to make use of all the new resources that we have. The professional development that we can give, as well as the maker spaces that we have incorporated on every single campus. And that has been such a big boon to our, not just our library program, but the students and the teachers are really enjoying that. And then money. Our district is very, very generous. We have committed, each of our librarians have a set budget for books. That money can only be spent on reading materials. So when I say books, that also means interactive books, online. That also means print books. That means eBooks. That means audiobooks, a lot of different things. So ninety-six-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And we appreciate every single cent. So when you look at our budgets, our annual budgets, you will not see anything left in those line items, because even if there's a little bit of money left in supplies, it's going to be moved to books. If a little bit of money left in travel, it'll be moved to books. So we appreciate Sandra Callahan and her team helping us do her best and for us. And I would appreciate all of you for supporting our librarians and our certified librarians this year.
I feel like I should jump in and say, CCH has been without a librarian for majority of this year. And these folks found out that they had book money that hadn't been spent. And they got together and they worked with Polit, and they got them books, and they got them on shelves, and did all the things. So, even for libraries that are not their own, they're making sure that they have the books that are necessary.
Yes, yes. That was very, very exciting at the last minute of the year, to like, whoa, no, we can't leave that money. We have to get it spent. So, our head librarian had a little team of people that helped her choose those books. And then, just last week, got them processed. So, give you back to Patty.
All right. So let me show you a few pictures. This is, oh, we have one more before the pictures. These are just some cool things you're going to see in our libraries that we have done besides lessons. Things like author visits, things like book fairs. We, many of us raise money through book fairs and also through our PTA to distribute books to our students for free for them to take home multiple times a year. And the kids always have the same reaction. I get to keep it. Yes, yes, you get to keep it. It's a present for you. We have, as Chris said, maker spaces, STEM clubs, Genius Hours, which are all kind of the same thing, getting kids doing hands-on things where they're thinking outside the box. And also offering professional development for our teachers. Let me show you a couple of pictures real quick. So here's a student receiving a cool ceiling tile at Red Rock Elementary for reading two-hundred-and-fifty-chapter books. This was through their accelerated reader program. And here's at my school, Bluebonnet Elementary, we implemented Read and Ride this year. So these are exercise bikes with a desk. And kids get to come down with a pass. And you can see on the wall, there's a sign that says, "There is one rule for all to see. If you want to ride, you have to read." So, it gets our kids reading and moving at the same time. We're super proud of that. And I skipped one. Sorry about that. Here's email. This is part of our maker space. These kids are building. I'm sure they had some kind of challenge that they're trying to work out there. We mentioned our Ozobots. So here's the Ozobots at Cedar Creek Elementary, if you've ever seen them. They're tiny little robots that you code using markers and different colors. 3D pens, another popular thing in the libraries. That's building with a pen that filament comes out of, that's almost like building with a hot glue gun. Here are some kiddos at Mina Elementary. And we have, I think, all of us received BEF grants. One of the grants received at Mina Elementary was for books that had won Caldecott Awards. So here are the students with their Caldecott books. And we just want to leave you with one thing. We are so proud of what we have done, but we are not done. We are pushing ourselves forward. We want our kids fully engaged in things like maker space and STEM club. One thing that's very important to us right now is boosting student access to the library. This is not a problem at elementary schools, but it is at secondary schools. Some of our schools limit when students can come to the library to their intervention time, or before and after school. And if you are involved in an intervention, like for dyslexia or something like that, that means you have zero time. And this is bothersome. And we hope that our principals and everyone on board would get those kids in the library. We want them in there. We also want to continue aligning our programs with the Future Ready Framework, moving ahead with that. And we are hoping soon that the BISD Library Media Specialist will be presenting at a state conference. Thank you for having us, and enjoy your books.
Thank you. All right, that was great information. Thank you again for coming here tonight patiently waiting. Yes, and feel free to stay around, or you're not going to hurt our feelings if you slide out of here either. So, yeah. Moving along here, we've taken care of the financial report, that section there, personnel report is for informational only. We'll move into Communications and Community Relations Report. And we're apparently going to have a brief presentation on parent and student survey results. Dr. Lee.
Message heard loud and clear. Okay, so this is a combined report. You have two documents that I've given you already. That's eighteen pages worth of data, so I encourage you to look at that. This is fifty slides maximum, so it will not take that long. From parents, and I focus this, these summaries around our priorities of academics, relationships, safety. So, it's this, we have some good news here. Our parents feel that their children have a positive learning environment at school, eighty-nine percent. These are all the percentage of parents that responded that, yes, they agreed with those statements. They feel comfortable talking to their teachers and their principals about how their kids are doing. They feel that their children are well-prepared for next school year. Those are all great. We have some work to do, maybe, even though these aren't bad scores, but we have some work to do on the homework assignments that we're giving. Parents may feel that they're not always valuable. But overall, this is really positive news about how parents feel about the academics in our schools. Regarding safety, eighty-six percent of parents say that their children feel safe at school. Seventy-seven percent say the discipline is handled effectively. Of about a list of twenty problems that they could have identified as serious problems at school, thirty-eight percent of them saw none of those were serious problems. And I think that's positive news, too. These were the top five problems. The bullying, disrespectful behavior towards adults, student stress, poor social skills, and fighting or physical aggression. Those four, those last four are in red, because those tie into, what you'll see in a minute, our student data nicely. Regarding relationships, our parents feel respected. They feel welcomed at our campuses. When they contact us here at the district office, they feel like we are friendly to them and courteous. We're timely in responding to their calls and emails. That middle number of eighty percent, parents are saying that they are well-informed about how they can get involved. However, twenty-seven percent are not involved in any capacity whatsoever, according to the parents who responded to the survey. Although they were involved enough to respond to the survey, so that's positive. In terms of how parents like to get information from us, email or newsletter is their primary information source. And it's also their preferred communication method. They like email, they like the text message after that, a phone call being second and third. And most of what we're doing, they find useful. There is some data around social media, specifically Twitter, that says that maybe they don't find that as impactful. And we will evaluate that. However, we are reaching some percentage of parents who like to use that method. So... Now, let's look at our students. Only forty-five percent rated their school as excellent or very good, which is down slightly from last year. However, they still feel like it's, they should come to school every day. Our middle school, high school, their classes are challenging, their teachers are providing them some feedback that's valuable to them. I like the fact that almost all of them say that their teachers are available to help them before and after school. They recognize that. This is their level of what they, are they prepared for the real world, our middle school and high school students, for problem solving, writing, reading, math, presentation and technology skills.
Oh, look at that rating.
Seventy-seven percent feel safe at school. So eighty-six percent of the parents said that they, that their child, you know, that they felt their child was safe at school. Seventy-seven percent of students reported that they feel safe at school. So there's a little bit of a gap there. Less than half feel like discipline is fair in secondary campuses. Seventy-two percent feel comfortable reporting the bullying, and seventy-eight percent feel like those reports are taken seriously. So of the top five problems, actually, poor social skills and bad manners should be in red all the way through. red also. So you'll notice that what our parents perceived, our students also perceive.
Is that, is it, other students should be more disciplined, or is that...
We don't know. We just asked the question, do you feel like discipline is fair at your school? And forty-four percent of middle school students and high school students said that it's fair, but that means that fifty-six percent didn't feel like it was fair.
So the only disagreement with, the fifth, was poor communication skills, correct? That's what the parents said that the students didn't see as a problem?
No, I'm sorry. The poor social skills and bad manners should be in red, not in black. So all four of those, what the parents perceived, what the elementary, intermediate school students perceived, what the middle school, high school students perceived. All four of those are, were common across the board. Students also feel respected by the adults. We asked them all kinds of adults, principals, teachers, counselors, nurses, cafeteria staff, custodial staff. Those numbers are very high. They also have friends at school at a really high level. They feel accepted and liked. Those last two, again, this is, these are areas where we can have room for growth, and I think some of the measures that we're taking with social, emotional learning, and with putting the social workers on our campuses at the elementary level, you know, I hope that these numbers will grow. Should have put that somewhere else so that we ended on a high note.
Good thing we weren't renewing the food service contract tonight.
Are there any questions? I do encourage you to read, you know, when you're, you know, in your spare time, read those eighteen pages, because there's a lot that I didn't give you tonight. I really was just giving you a summary. All of this information has been shared with our leadership team, as well as the campus principals, and then those points that relate to our cafeteria folks, or our custodial folks, or, you know, anybody else who needs to know, they'll get those pieces of information as well, so that they can make decisions for next school year.
Christie, I thought the ones that I've read, the questions were really very thoughtful questions. It didn't seem like a normal survey. I mean, did you guys create this?
Yes, we did. These are the same questions that we used last year.
Last year. But, yeah, because it seemed to get to a little bit more than just the basic, yeah, do you like your school? I mean, that was very impressive, and I think because of that, you really did get some really good information. And the other thing is, I mean, I think it's almost encouraging that everyone identifies, even the kids, that there's disrespect, and that's almost saying that they're crying out for that respect, because they say their teachers respect them, but they notice that that is one thing that bothers them in their school, is that that's not happening.
That's right. The kids from the third graders, who are, that's the first grade that they take the survey, up to seniors, they all recognize that the number-one problem was disrespect towards adults.
Adults. So it is something that can be tackled and makes other children feel safe when that respect is there.
I agree.
It was really...
It was good, and we did have this survey in our board book, and so it was great. I know every board member here has reviewed all four-hundred-and-twenty pages of that board book, so we appreciate it being in there. All right, thank you, Dr. Lee.
Thank you.
All right. Operations and police report is, there'll be no report this month, but we're looking forward to hearing about all the exciting things of how to move this district forward in our future meetings, so welcome. Consent agenda, would any board member like to pull any consent agenda item for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Still moving.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we're getting there. This is, yeah, here's our favorite one. We are going to...
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, we're going to move to action items here, and we're going to consider designating a delegate and an alternative delegate to the two-thousand-nineteen Tasby Delegate Assembly in September, and I would love to have this opportunity to make a motion that Dr. Mix would be our delegate, and Billy Moore would be our alternative delegate for the two-thousand-nineteen Tasby Delegate Assembly in September.
Second.
And we have a second. All right.
It's quick.
Any further discussion?
Wow. Wait, I thought the new guys were supposed to go. You already got them.
We had them.
Okay. Goes back around.
And, yeah, I mean, I only picked these two guys, because they got to move their seats, you know, so we just, you know, so. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you for y'all's leadership. Billy Moore, we appreciate it. All right.
Do you reconsider it? No? Okay.
What's that?
Nothing.
All right. At this time, we will consider canceling the July sixteenth, two-thousand-nineteen regular school board meeting, which is something that we've done in the past, because our team here has done such a great job of bringing all this to us in one night in June here. So don't leave us anything for next month.
That's right.
We do, and respect the time that the administrative team is definitely a time when they can take some vacation throughout the year, and also they're working hard on getting ready for the new school year. So at this time, I'll make a motion to cancel the July sixteen, two-thousand-nineteen regular school board meeting.
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Information, informational items, looks like everything is for information only. Is there anything that the board would like to add to this meeting? If there is nothing, do we have any objections to adjourning this meeting? If there are none of those, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.